Organization of the Board, is there a motion and a second to approve the Chairperson for 2015?
I move that we nominate Tom Wysef as Chair.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
He missed the meeting, so he's the Chairperson. What happens when you miss meetings, right?
That sounds good, sounds good. Would you please call roll?
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce? Motion carried.
Do we need to get a Vice Chair?
You could probably do the Vice Chair since Tom is missing. Usually the Chair would take over at that point.
Yes, sorry. Usually the Chair would take over at this point, but we have to get a Vice Chairperson. Do we have any nominations for that?
I nominate Commissioner Ryan Krogman as Vice Chair.
One second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Can you please call roll?
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Go for it, Ryan.
All right. Nothing like getting thrown into the fire right off the bat. All right, we are number six in our agenda. Invitation for citizen to schedule a time on a future commission agenda. Anybody?
And then we have the, oh.
Good morning.
Good morning. Doc Canous is my name. And I live at 932 44th Street South. And over the last 20 years, I have been trying to get a little help with our drainage from the city of Brookings. And last year, the Commission decided that they would look into the matter. And Don Larson kind of appointed himself, I think, at the time to try to get some negotiations with the city started. And we did have a meeting last fall. And now Doc is not with us anymore. So I guess I'm looking to, you know, sit down with the council again and get someone as a leader from our new group and see if we can kind of continue.
All right, that sounds, did you want to put something on the agenda, discuss that next, next meeting?
And that would be great.
Okay, we'll do that.
And then, and then one other thing I'd like to talk with the Commission about at that meeting too would be, there's your gravel bidding process for gravel for county roads.
Okay.
Several other counties do things a little different than Brookings County does. And. There we go. Several other counties do things different than Brookings County does. And gravel is most efficient when it's hauled a short distance because the trucks that haul will take a lot of fuel. So I think we could save the taxpayers some money by maybe revising the way that we get our gravel.
Okay, we'll get that on the next agenda. Thanks, Doc. Anybody else? Schedule a time next agenda. All right, moving on, approval of agenda.
Actually, we're going to introduce our new Circuit Court Administrator.
Oh, sorry there, okay. Yep, our new Circuit Court Administrator, welcome, Jenny Hamrick.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I've been eight days on the job now, so it's been an exciting eight days and I'm learning a lot. I came from the Swifhtown Center. I was at the Swifhtown Center for 13 years, so I've been in Brookings about 13 and a half years. I have four children. They range from sixth grade all the way down to a five-year-old, so it's a busy household for us. I'm really excited about the challenge that I have ahead of me, and I have a great staff in Brookings and all over the county. And the next two weeks, I'll actually be traveling to the 14 other counties to meet all the other people in the Third Circuit. But I'm very excited to be here and thank you for allowing me to introduce myself. And I look forward to a long, successful career next door. So thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. All right, approval of agenda. Any changes on the agenda? All right, look for a motion to approve. I want to, do I have, I mean?
No, that's just usually done with, just by consensus usually or just without objection from the Board, it's approved.
All right. Agenda is approved. Consent agenda items.
It did add the, under the iPad tablet stipend, I added one I set on your desk today for Commissioner Miller. I was in the mode of the new commissioners, getting them set up, but she also receives the stipend again after, since she was re-elected.
Yeah, it, okay, consent agenda has the minutes. Any travel education requests, personal action notices, and again, stipends for the iPads and Human Services report. Any questions on that? All right, consent agenda will be approved. We're on to nine, routine business, approval of claims.
Move to approve.
Motion by Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jensen, discussion. Hearing none, call the roll.
Pierce?
Yes.
Krogman?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Claims have been approved. Department head reports. We will start here with Bob. Get started with us, please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'd like to welcome Commissioner Pierce and Commissioner Jensen to the Board. I look forward, my whole staff looks forward to working with you. The, in your packet, I have two staff reports. The first one is my year-end report for my planning and zoning division or part of my, my department. And by county, Commission desires every, every board that's appointed by the Commission would like to have a yearly report of what goes on, and this is my yearly report. It's under 2014 year-end report and it says Planning and Zoning Board Report. That's the breakdown of my Planning and Zoning Commission. And tells you how many meetings we had and how many conditional uses were granted, and how to hit the highlights, our comprehensive plan updates ongoing. We did have alternate board members appointed for the first time in 2014. We are working with the First District Association of Local Governments throughout the whole year, and they are helping us with our comprehensive plan and any of the other ordinance updates that we're doing. We've had, some of our board members attended the South Dakota Planters Association Conference this year, and our building codes were updated to the International Residential Code and International Building Code 2015. And then, once we move into our department itself, we, we have one member on the ad hoc Transportation Committee for the City of Brookings. We attended various conferences throughout the year, once again, working on the comprehensive plan and working at the First Planning District. You can see our building permits. We break down the history of the building permits from 2014, and then we got our historical data. We are, we're down for the year 2014, and that's just the way, it's hard to judge the economy at times. We were going real good, 2013, we saw, we kept going up and up and up, and 2013, we thought we'd keep moving, and 2014 put us back to about the 2012 level approximately. So we will keep plugging away on that, and then we break down the number of building permits and what type we got. One good thing to see is under number nine, the City of Aurora, you know, they're building a new substation over a million and a half dollars' worth, and we get no cost on a permit of that from another municipal government in town. But it's good to see that they're actually building their own power network within the City of Aurora, and that's, that's good for Brookings County overall. And the last, you can see, we've got 143 open inspections, and that's the policy where Brookings County has a building inspection program, but it has to pay for itself. No money comes from, from county funds to pay for building inspections, and we've got 143 still open. That means county citizens have paid us $100 for each one of those, and we are in the process of, sometimes we literally have to chase these people down to say, hey, we're here to look at your building, but we are in that process. And you can see from 2003, we've still got one open, one, and it progresses down the line. And it will come a time, and we just have to literally send them a letter saying, we've tried for 10 years and we can't get ahold of you, so if you want your building inspected, contact us, one of them kind of, kind of deal. Under the emergency management side, we've updated several of our plans this year. We got a local emergency operations plan updated. We updated our hazmat plan. We finalized the pre-disaster mitigation plan, which was in work when I got here. The, we have taken control of the Be Ready Brookings website, which is part of the Brookings Pandemic Planning Coordinating Committee. Staff members have attended local and national conferences on emergency management. We did have one Emergency Operations Center exercise at the state level, and we had one tabletop exercise dealing with it, with the Ebola information when it came out during the hot season for the Ebola. And I responded to at least seven incidences that required reporting to the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management. We participated in the Brookings National Preparedness Day. As an annual event, we gave away two weather radios to county citizens. We had a booth at the Brookings Area Home Show in conjunction with the Brookings County Sheriff's Department. I'm still on the U.S. Department of Transportation Gas Pipeline Safety Committee. We participated in a webinar and a mobile workshop for the National Association of Counties, and I went to a fancy course down in Alabama where I got to play with anthrax and live chemical agents, which is no fun, rest assured. And then, the next year-end report is my Local Emergency Planning Committee report, and that's a standalone report by itself. Local Emergency Planning Committee, the, the members of that committee, it is a county committee, but the members have to, have to meet certain criteria, such as being from local business, local emergency response facilities, hospitals, and so on and so forth. There, we did have four regularly scheduled meetings. We update our annual roster once a year, and we'll be updating that next month. They are the ones that I get most of my funding from for the Brookings Area Home Show, and they're also the ones that allowed us to get the grant money to update our hazmat plan, and they also help our booth at the National Preparedness Day. Our goals for 2015 for the Local Emergency Planning Committee is update our annual roster, do an annual review of the hazmat plan, and participate in at least one hazmat-related exercise. The budget on the Local Emergency Planning Committee is maintained by the Brookings County Finance Office that comes through my office. The State Emergency Response Commission funds that particular committee. Those are my committee reports, and also in the packet, I had another staff report that the Board requested I continue from December 30th on the Brookings, City of Brookings Sustainability Council's request to have a county representative. Is there any discussion? I, I did include that in the packet this, on this time.
Yeah, when we, we talked a little bit about that, we were going to discuss that here. So we, we don't have that on the agenda. I don't think it's a standalone, I think it was just a, within my department head report, but would you like me to bring it back next meeting as a standalone? I don't know, I'm not sure if we want to beat that. I guess, any thoughts on that?
My only thought on that is that I don't believe, I, I know you questioned whether or not it should be a staff person, and I don't believe it should. But I also don't know that a Commissioner should be on that board either. I'm wondering if, if we could do like we do with our other boards, ask for, advertise it and ask for someone to submit an application to be on that board.
We did have correspondence, or the Commission Department did have some correspondence. After the last meeting, we contacted the Sustainability Council staff, and it sounds like they want one name and one name only, is what I took from that conversation.
They want a representative from the county, is that what they want?
No, they want Ms. Megan Theroux.
And so, and otherwise, if she's not there?
If she's not there, they don't, they don't need anyone from Brookings County.
Okay. Well, I, yeah. My first thought is, they wanted a county representative, we could pick a county representative. So if, if it's just her, and that's what it is, I think, you know, I wouldn't be for that. I think we would, just like the other ones we have, whether it's liaison for the hospital board or ex-fisio for the hospital board, we choose somebody to be on that. And if that's what they're asking for, we can certainly choose somebody, but if it's basically, it's Megan or nobody, my vote's nobody.
I will, I'll work with the County Commission Department, and we'll, we'll respond back to the Sustainability Council in an appropriate manner. And my time's short, but last, but not, April 9th, we have that Senior Officials Workshop for All Hazards. Now that we got new board members, I have to, I'll send that back out again for the next packet. But April the 9th, at the, we do, we will need the Commission to check their schedules to see who can, who will be able to attend that particular meeting. It's a six-hour training session, and I've got three commitments from the City of Volga, and I'm sending the other letters out to the rest of the communities now. That would be, if there's any, any emergency management course that you attend for the year, this would be the one. It's a six-hour training workshop and a.
What day was that again?
April the 9th, 2015. And I'll get that in your packet once again, so the citizens can also understand what we're talking about here. And other than that, I've got an exercise coming up in March that Commissioner Wysef is on my planning team, but I see he is ill, so I'll have to work with getting that, that set up. And other than that, that's all I have unless the Board has any questions for me.
Any questions for Bob?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, we have a scheduled 9:15 item, so we are at 9:18, we're a little behind, so I apologize for that. Todd Case from First District, year-end report.
Let's show the PowerPoint first, Stacey.
Yep.
Good morning.
Morning.
For those of you that have been sitting in those Commissioner chairs for a while, this is going to be a very similar story that you've heard from me for the last six years. For Larry and LeAnn, this is going to be maybe something a little bit new. It's going to give me an opportunity to tell you a little bit about the First District and some of the services that we provide our local members. The First District Association of Local Governments is one of six regional planning and development districts located throughout the state. We have sister offices in Sioux Falls, Yankton, Pierre, Aberdeen, and in Rapid City. Next, please. We were created in 1971 through executive order by then-Governor Frank Farrar. Basically, we serve 11 counties and 75 communities in northeastern South Dakota, running from Roberts County down to Moody, over to Minor, and back up to Clark. Next, please. We are governed by a governing body, which is responsible for hiring the Executive Director. They approve the work plan and the budget for our office. They set the general direction of work activities that they like to see over the course of the coming year. We have a 35-member board. There are three representatives from each county, a large member, a municipal member, and a county member, plus we also have the Chairman of the Flanders, Santee, Sioux, and Assistant Wapeno Yate, our members. Currently, oop, I grabbed my wrong one. Did I give you the Moody County or the Brookings County? Hey, I'm going to Brookings, Moody is, go to your, the last page of the, of the handout. Does that, does that say Brookings?
Yeah, we're okay.
Here's, okay, mine says Moody. All right, well, no, I'm fine, I'm, I'm all right. I can read it off the top. I just wanted to make sure, excuse me. One of the questions, Dennis Falcon has been the county rep for our organization for the last six or seven years, and will be appointing a new one today. Next slide, please. As far as how are we funded, that's a question that's often asked. Basically, we have three general revenue streams. The first is dues. All of the counties and all of the communities with a population of over 100 paid dues into our organization, that currently represents about 23% of our operating revenues, and that's been fairly consistent since my, my tenure here at the district. 22% of our income comes in the form of state and federal contracts. Those could be for a wide variety of, of things that we do for both the state and the feds, from some, from operating grants to specific work activities for those two entities. And 52%, more than half, is, comes from the area of fee-for-service work. And we're allowed, able to do that fee-for-service work for our members at costs below the private sector due to the power of the collective that we have with, with the dues and the monies that we can use from the state and federal grants to offset our activities. Next, please. As far as the staff, we have a 12-member staff that are full-time. We have one part-time employee, the 12 that have been there, kind of like me, they've been there for a while. I have 22 years here in May, seven years as the Executive Director, but a very well seasoned staff to handle our, our members' needs. Next, please. As far as what is it that we do, we're very well-versed in applying, making applications, preparing applications for grants and loans for public infrastructure projects, for road projects, you know, if, if there's a loan or a grant program out there for public entities to apply for, we've probably made the application on their behalf. If we're fortunate enough to get those applications funded, there comes the quote "free money", it's all red tape that's associated with the free money, and we assist in the administration of those dollars. As far as planning and research, I spent the first 15 years of my career with the district in, in policy development, zoning plans, specifics, specific studies, a wide variety of analysis. If it's got plan, report, analysis in this title, we've probably done something to that effect. We have some specialty areas as well. We work with counties and communities in putting together tax and financing districts. GIS, Geographic Information Systems, is a very integral part of who we are. We have three and a half employees that work just in GIS. We've been doing it for over 20 years. We develop data, we web host data, and a wide variety of, of other GIS applications and analysis. And then, we have our RLFs. We have a sister organization called the First District Development Company. The First District Development Company is a Small Business Administration Certified Development Company. We package and process SBA 504 loans for private business. We also have a portfolio of revolving loan funds that we make, that are out there for private individuals to come in and borrow money for new and expanding businesses. We co-op with local lending institutions, usually taking a shared first or subordinated second position on those types of projects. And then, we're always out there promoting and supporting other state and federal programs that come before you. The next page, please. As far as results, we're an organization that has so many touchy-feely things that are going on in policy, it's hard to really kind of get back to, you know, what's our return on investment. So what I've been doing for the last six or seven years is just coming back, showing those communities and counties throughout the district that have taken the opportunity to reinvest in themselves and how we've been able to assist in the, the application preparation for grant and grant dollars. And you can see in 2014, the dues that were paid into the organization was about $237,000. We were able to assist our members in obtaining close to $6.5 million in grants and principal forgiveness, which gives us a return of investment for every dollar's worth of dues in 2014 at $27.30, which is a little bit above our average that we've been running through 2008 to 2014, which was $25.86. Pretty consistent over the years. This has been since I've been the Director. 2011, we had a little bit of a dip of $4.67. That's primarily because in 2009 and 2010, there was a lot of stimulus money, and everybody that had projects were doing projects, and so we were basically administering projects in 2011. Next slide, please. Regarding Brookings County, we, we were able to assist Brookings County, again, in assisting our members there, obtaining $1.1 million in grants for some projects, and I'll talk about those in a second. Due was $50,900 for the county and the members and the municipalities. Our return on investment is $21.80 this year, $28.42, which will show you that, if you go back to the previous, we were $25.86 on the district average. So Brookings County over the last six or seven years does better than the average district-wide as far as what we're doing. And then what that tells me is that Brookings Counties and the municipalities in Brookings County are reinvesting themselves. They're growing, we have a dynamic economy, things are going well, and that's really a reflection of that. The other document, please. This here is just basically a quick synopsis of some of the things that our office staff has been working on in Brookings County over the course of the last year. Regarding Brookings County specific, we do maintain a couple statewide GIS data sets. One is called the County Address Range Data Set, and the other one is the Road Centerline Data Set. One is a South Dakota One Call, and one is a South Dakota DOT. And this is, I'm talking off the white handout with some highlights on it. We also attend Brookings County Planning Commission meetings. Luke Muller, I know, is always working with Megan and Bob regarding things that are happening on a monthly basis at the, at the Brookings County Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment. This last year, we were able to assist Bob in obtaining a $2,600 grant to do the hazardous materials plan that he had talked about earlier. That was recently submitted and accepted by the state. Currently, we are working on developing what we call the South Dakota Department of Ag County Site Analysis. Couple years ago, Jay Gilbertson in East Dakota Water Development District helped in putting together a pilot project that has identified development sites for animal feeding operations and ag development sites. The state of South Dakota has taken that pilot study that we did a couple years ago, and they've morphed it into a statewide program where we've, our office has conducted 14 of these analyses already across the state, and we're doing another 16 with our sister organizations, where we're out there identifying locations that meet certain protocols as far as the ability to have access to water, good roads, electricity, and meet county zoning regulations for new animal feeding operations and also ag industries. And so, we are updating that study, and it'll be done here this spring here in Brookings County, so we'll be back to report on that this spring. And also, since about the middle of July this year, we've been working with staff here on updating the county's comprehensive land use plan. We've had several meetings, talking about policy. We'll be meeting again this month. Our hope is that before spring is over, we will have a document that can be coming back to the County Commission for their approval regarding projecting future land use development in this, in the county. Regarding the City of Brookings, we've been administrating some projects for them regarding drainage and the Boys and Girls Club. We did an environmental review for the ICAP for affordable housing project here in Brookings. Sinai was one of the communities that we've done some specific work and were recipients of some large dollars of grants. They received a $1 million consolidated grant and $100,000 principal forgiveness off a $500,000 loan for a new sanitary sewer, lagoon, and collection system in Sinai. And that's been a project we've been working for a couple years. And then currently, Luke and our office is working with Volga in developing a new comprehensive land use plan. For the last nine months, I've been working with Al Hooton and a group of other representatives from across five other counties on the Brookings County Commute Region, Stronger Economies Together Economic Development Planning Process. That's basically being run through SDSU and Extension to go out and take a look at trying to find ways that we can have the Brookings area, counties within the area work better together for economic development activities, and I think that report is, is currently being written. And then we also provide zoning administration assistance to Aurora, Elton White, and Brookings County, sometimes City of Brookings, but they have a pretty good staff that can take care of themselves most of the time. And then, we did obtain two district-wide grants for economic development in GIS training services, and Brookings County Sheriff, those grants would have been about $7,500. So again, the rest of the report just details what was laid out in the slides. Looking forward to, again, another good year of working with Brookings. Our, my mantra has been, the 22 years is, we are busy, and if you have something, all you have to do is ask, we'll throw you in the queue. Sometimes we'll, your stuff will come to the, you know, the forefront further than others if we need to get something done. But you have a very competent staff here with Brookings County. We've enjoyed working with them, and I, I don't see any issues moving forward, and I'd be more than glad to take any questions or comments.
Todd, I'd just like to thank you for all the work that you have done, and your staff has been very diligent in supporting us in our endeavors, and we really appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you.
Definitely. And.
has been very diligent in supporting us in our endeavors, and we really appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you.
Definitely. And your responsiveness has been unbelievable, if you ask me. I mean, if we ask for something, you're here and you're prepared, and our dues are well-spent, I would have to say.
I appreciate it, and I'm, I'm only here as a reflection upon my staff, and they do a very good job. And if there's anything that we can do, we'll try. If there's something we don't know how to do, we still might try to do it, just to see how it goes. But again, Brookings County has been a strong supporter of the municipalities, and I think we enjoy working in Brookings. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. All right. Nine-thirty, scheduled agenda item, youth mentoring update. Good morning. If you'd please state your name when you up to the microphone. We appreciate that.
Good morning. My name is Patty Bacon, and I am the new program director for the Brookings County Youth Mentoring Program. And with me is Wendy Long. She is our board chair, and a number of our board members are out in the audience this morning. We thank you for the opportunity to come and educate you a little bit about our mentoring program. It came to our attention that many of our elected officials are not aware of the wonderful work that our mentors do in the Brookings area. So we just passed out a brief handout. I won't take much of your time this morning, but our purpose is to promote one-on-one mentoring efforts with youth in the community. It was developed to ensure that all youth have the guidance and support of a caring, stable adult. The mentor relationship is intended to empower youth to reach their full potential as contributing individuals to their communities. And we seek volunteer mentors who would like to assist those youth in the community and who would benefit from involvement and influence of caring, stable adult. And I can tell you from personal experience, when I was single parenting in Rapid City, both of my children benefited from a mentor, and we talk about that today, that that had a huge stabilizing influence on their life while we were going through some very painful financial times, living in poverty and struggling from day to day. Having that mentor in their lives was a huge benefit, so I can personally attest to how the program works. In Brookings, we currently have a hundred-and-twenty-nine matched mentors and mentees in our program, but we have forty-three young people who are yet to be matched. We really need to recruit more mentors. We need to recruit more community members. We have a great response from our campus community, and we love that the students want to be part of this. But it is really crucial, if we're going to provide long-term impacts on these young people, that we have more community members involved in this, in this program. And so I want to urge all of you to consider becoming mentors. And if you know anyone who has just an hour to spare each week, that's all we ask is an hour, that you consider doing that. Our biggest need is in the area of males. We have, most of our young people waiting for a match are, are young males, and we find that they respond better to an adult male. So once again, we encourage you to consider doing that. Also, you'll note that our name is Brookings County Youth Mentoring Program, and we would like very much to extend, expand into outline communities. But currently, we do not have the financial resources to do so. We've had a few successes with the, with the Sioux Valley School District in Volga, but we just don't have the time and the resources to spend the kind of time in that community we'd like to. So we'd love to begin a conversation with all of you as county commissioners on ways that we could possibly work together to get that outreach accomplished, because in order for it to work, we have to have the school system on board. We very much partner with the Brookings School System. It is our counselors who help match those children with the adults. And then we also need local adults to volunteer to be the mentors for those young people. I've just provided you some, with some statistics at the bottom, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but I can tell you that mentoring does have a significant impact on at-risk children, and it significantly reduces the, the chances that they will end up in our juvenile system that we don't want them to be in. So investing small amounts of money in a youth mentoring program is a huge return on investment. And I hope by the next time I come to see you, I can provide you with those things. But I've only been on the job a month, so didn't quite have time to do that. Wendy, do you have anything else you would like to add?
I've been with the mentoring program for about four years, and it's been really exciting to see how successful the program has become since I've been involved with it. It has grown substantially in the last four years, and there's still such a need for mentors in the mentoring program. We just keep growing and growing, and we would like to be able to offer our assistance to all of the children in Brookings County. But like Patty said, we are a little bit strapped fund-wise to actually be able to pair all of our kids with the mentors. But it's very exciting. We are working right now on a program that shows how successful our program is so that we can provide you with graphs and data that way. It's not ready as of yet, but it is something that we are striving towards so that we can show how successful our program is, not only with our children, but also on paper. And a lot of this is coming from the counselors, the parents, and everyone who is involved with the children in making their lives a little bit better and a little bit more successful for our community. Are there any questions for us?
Questions, yes.
I would just like to say not a question, but a comment. I've been a mentor through the Brookings Youth Mentor Program for four years. I'm paired with a young fellow that was eight when we started, and he's twelve now, and it's not only changed his life, it's changed my life. It is a great program.
Question for you. Where do you get your funds now? Where are those coming from?
We get funding through grants primarily. We are in the early stages of, of developing our community support through donor programs, so it's primarily fundraising events and a few grants that we received our money. We are very minimally staffed. I'm only twenty hours a week. We have a grant writer who averages around ten hours a week, and our office manager around five. So you can see that we're a very fiscally responsible group, but it's, it shows you how limited we are in able, being able to expand our, our program and our services, because with that many hours a week, it's hard to get that done.
So grants, basically, any funds from United Way?
Yes, that is, that's a grant. So yes. We're waiting to find out the actual amount we'll get from them this year.
We actively have two major annual fundraisers a year that are, we're building up. One of them is called Bringing the Game. I'm not really sure if anyone has attended that one. Last year, it was highly successful. We work with the SDSU Women's and Men's Basketball Team. They are wonderful in helping with us. Some of them are also mentors, but we raised quite a substantial amount of money last year for, with our game, so that was one of our major fundraisers. So we are actively seeking the community involvement, and we are trying to do two major fundraisers as well as small fundraisers throughout the year. So we're not just relying on grants, but we are actively seeking other means of financial support.
Mr. Chair. I think youth mentoring has applied to us in, in our...
It, to my knowledge, they've applied twice and were denied both times.
Okay. So, you know...
And I don't think they applied last year, so...
We have a pool of money, and we spread it out as best we can. However, you know, I think that with your graphs and, and things like that, the improvements that it sounds like you're looking to make, you know, try the budgeting process again, and, and we'll, we'll take a look at it again. Obviously, for 2015, our budget is set.
Well, we appreciate that. And the study that Wendy is referring to is being done by SDSU, and it is an academically approved study, so it should give us some really good data on specific outcomes here in, in our program. So we will put that together for you, and thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to make one comment, too. I've been a mentor for ten years, and it's a great program, and I wish you all the success because it does make a big difference.
Thank you.
All right. What do we have for time here? We've got about five minutes for our next scheduled one here, so Mike, we're gonna squeeze you in here for, back to a department head report.
Good morning, and, and nice to see the new commissioners on board. I was gonna go a little bit about how our economic assistance goes and what programs we do on that. As you know, we do in limited numbers of rent and utilities. The process for that, of course, is if someone would contact us, and the first thing we have to do is look at is why did they get behind? Are, if we help them this time, will they be able to pay the rest of them, because it's a one-time type deal? And I guess the other thing is, is we look for other sources. And so if you ever notice on our, what we call the, the welfare report, you'll see sometimes that it will address different things such as a not emergent. That means at the hospital. In that particular case, it would have been an operation that could have been pre-approved prior to going forward on it. Most time when you'll see on those, most of those people are going to be below the poverty level, all right? So in a lot of cases, if we, with the economic assistance side of it, a lot of those are above the poverty level. We usually try to use a two-hundred percent or less. We can help them, and those people are usually going to be the ones that pay us back. If you fall under that, then, then we really don't want to assist because we can't figure out how you're gonna be able to reimburse the county for their expenses. But on the welfare report, when it comes to hospitals, most of those people are going to be below the poverty level, and we can only deny those based on them not either being an emergency or if they, if they are over the poverty level, and we have to see if they had any funding towards that. And I guess one of the questions was, how much traffic do we have? In the last three days, we had thirty, made thirty-one phone calls out. A lot of those were trying to get money for the, the guy that needed the medications. Probably ten of those were. During that period, we also had twenty-three incoming calls, had nine veterans stop in in the last three days, and had ten welfare clients stop in or assist, ask for assistance.
Is that normal, or is that, you know, especially for the holidays? Do you see some of that picking up?
Actually, with the holidays, it, it goes down quite a bit. Most of the time, I would say that we're probably, average week, we probably hit closer, you know, I guess I would, you know, we hit about seventy-five to a hundred calls an average week. And, but during the holidays, we, we do see quite a reduction in the number of people coming in. So, like all things, they don't want to come in. Don't want to hang out at the government building that badly during the holidays.
Any questions?
Thank you for that detailed report. Good job.
Thanks, Mike. All right. It's nine forty-five. Is, I don't see, he's not here, so we'll keep moving on, and when we, when he shows up, we'll get him on here. So Joyce.
Good morning, and welcome to Commissioner Jensen and Commissioner Pierce to the world of county government. Just a real quick report. First of all, I'd like to invite you to visit our office if you have any questions of the process of appraising the properties in Brookings County for taxing purposes. And we're probably the most least understood and the most, people can avoid our numbering and our statistical studies, so, but please come in and visit us, because I did include in your packet this week, review information for you for the 2015 assessment plan and also the 2015 valuation changes. So you have two documents in your packet to look at and review and study, and I will visit with you in greater length at our last meeting in January about that. But prior to that meeting, if you have any questions, please stop by. And on another note, Professor Larry Jansen and Doug Malo will be presenting a 2015 appraisal class this semester at SDSU, and our office has been asked to assist them with this. They do an ag appraisal study, and they need some information from our office, and we assist them with that. We also give them access to Beacon, our real estate website, so they can all use that for this class. And then they will be visiting with us and with Bev's office, the Register of Deeds, and also FSA and NRCS, and we will probably be meeting here on April first for that meeting, and I need to set that up with Stacy. So, any questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vicki.
Mine is short and sweet. We got approved, our levy's got approved, and so everything is down at qualified presort, and it will go out this week. So everybody should be receiving their tax notices this week, so we are good to go. That's our update. Yes.
So tax notices, they're, they're set, right?
Yes.
Then you'll send cards out for the new assessed values, which they will have an...
We will send out the actual tax notices on what is due, and it always goes out the first week in January. It's probably gonna be a couple of days later than normal, but it will be out this week, so...
Okay.
Yep.
When we get, when we get calls that this isn't right, it's like, okay, it's too late.
Yeah, right.
The next one's coming in, we gotta do it next year.
It is what is due, and we do have all the figures in our office, so if anybody needs them, they're, they're there.
All right.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. All right. Sheriff.
Want to welcome Commissioners Jensen and Pierce, too, and my door is always open. Once you get past security, so, so you're welcome at my office anytime. Just a, a quick update on, on jail statistics. We have twenty-four inmates. I have eleven on work release. I have one female inmate. I have twelve male inmates at the present time. It show, and probably in February, I'll have my end-of-the-year report that I'll present to, to the commission, and it has showed that in, just a, a quick update here, in 2013, we averaged about twenty inmates per day, and in 2014, we went up to twenty-six, and that started after July, so, and a lot of those were felons, and they've been high-maintenance felons, too, with medical issues and those types of things, which shows our trends going up a little bit in the, with the inmates and stuff. You know, if I stay under thirty, it's pretty comfortable at the jail. Once I get over thirty, then it gets to be a little labor, may need to bring in a, an extra person for, to, to, to help watch the monitors and those types of things. But under thirty, it's pretty manageable at, at the detention center. I have fifty-six on twenty-four-seven that's down, been in the sixties, sixty-five and there. That's a good sign, though. So maybe when we're down on the alcohol, maybe that shows we're doing something different out there with our drinking habits. So fifty-six total participants. I have twenty-five that come in twice a day. I have twenty-four on scram that come in once a week to download, and I have seven that are, are testing in, out of Brookings County, sentenced out of Brookings County, but they're testing in another county. Also, the, the last, our last snow event here, we had, it was good. I mean, we didn't have a lot of issues. I think we had, yesterday, we had four accidents, one injury. Biggest thing was visibility. I felt bad, the White Department was called out to help a deputy with visibility. A lot of times when there's an accident, our patrol cars go right to the accident, and then someone coming down the road sees the red lights and hit their brakes, and, and, so the fire departments are good about coming out, so we called White out, and then one of the White Firemen got, got ran into out there, so that nobody got hurt. But I appreciate the volunteer fire departments. Other than that, if you have any questions. One thing is, is Scott Sebring is my assistant sheriff. He's my media deputy, and the two new commissioners will put you on our, on, on, on our media release, so you'll get the, the same media releases that, the paper, and, and so we'll put, get you guys on right away, so. That way, if you're like me, you don't like any questions. That way, if, if we have something serious, you're aware of it, too, so if someone asks you at a coffee shop and, and those types of things, so. If you have any questions.
Right. Questions? All right. Thanks, Marty.
Thanks.
All right, Dick. Good morning.
Welcome again to the new commissioners. The first item, obviously, snow is kind of an immediate issue we're, we're dealing with now. Second, the letter from... Second, the letter from the DOT that was in your package, asking if we would like to exchange our funds for state money. My recommendation would be, you know, that we should just keep it in there. We've got so many things going and it doesn't accumulate very fast, that it won't make a difference as far as our strategic planning of what we've got going for 2015. There's also a possible communication and conversation gonna be going on in Washington about raising the federal gas tax. We'll just have to see how that pans out, but at least they're thinking about us and, and hopefully we'll get some long-term financial help from the, the feds in one way or another. The other thing with 2015 for the two commissioners on board, we've got a pretty full agenda for 34th Avenue project, 213th Street project that could very well come to be. Highway 77 north will get done this year. There's a bridge going in at the gun range. We'll be doing two box culverts for sure. Not to mention all our regular routine maintenance that's an annual type of occurrence. So it, it looks like a good year for us and, and hopefully we'll not run into any snags or, or possible projects that, that don't evolve as fast as we'd like in 2015. A couple different things that kinda coincide with this year of numerous projects. Minnesota LTAP is sponsoring a conference in February that's strictly dealing with innovative and, and new techniques and materials in, in the road and asphalt particularly field. And so I'll be turning in, in, in the near future, a travel request to go to that. It's a one-day thing in Mankato, Minnesota, but it, I think it would be very informative and we haven't did a lot with Minnesota LTAP, but their, the conference really looks informative, and I think I'd gain a lot by going to it. Another one is the NACE National Conference that'll be coming up in April. And again, these are just ones that we budgeted for and, and hopefully gain a lot from, but just to give you the heads-up of, of that. And unless you have any questions, I, I don't have anything else. And, and for example, if you wanna look at the plans and, and of any of these projects, I have those. Feel free to give me a call and we'll get together.
I do have a question. And when we're talking about 2015, and, and I haven't seen the list of where all the different county projects are for the highway department, but the 20th Street overpass, is that something that's on the list to be discussed?
Actually, no, 'cause that would either be the city of Brookings or if they would approach the DOT on a state level. I know they've been lobbying them pretty strong to get that, but that would not be one of ours.
So the east side of the overpass would be the county, would it not?
It, it, actually, when you get to the east side, that's a township road, but it's in the county, yes.
So that's not something that we're even participating in, in discussing at all?
No. Well, just as a listener.
Okay. And I, and I just will say that I've had maybe six people approach me on that, and I wasn't even sworn in yet. So I wanted to know if the county is even participating in conversations on, on that issue. But, but not anything at this point. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I think on, on that one, because of going over the interstate, state's gonna have the main say on that, getting on the step and the funds for it. We may end up having to ask to participate in the funds and stuff like that down the road. Bob, you have a comment on that?
Yes. On that committee that I referred to during my department head report on the trans, ad hoc transportation committee, I'll be keeping the county commission updated, 'cause that is one of the, one of the things that we'll be discussing as a committee, as an ad hoc transportation committee. So I'll be sure to keep the whole, whole commission updated on that status.
And I think that's something we should look at in our strategic planning down the road, definitely, because if that comes to fruition, which the city's pushing pretty hard for it, we'll have to potentially participate, but also figure out, after we get the traffic over, what we're gonna do with it. And so 34th will be paved by then.
Right.
We'll have that little chunk there, so, yeah, there'll be some discussion down there, but I think strategically, that'll be something we have to keep an eye on too, planning purposes.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other que-? Alright, thanks, Dick. Alright, I see Bev had to take off. Looks like it's everybody, so we'll move on to regular business. Legal papers. Action to approve papers for, as legal papers for Brookings County. Look to a motion for, identify those.
Move to approve the Brookings Register, the Volga Tribune, and Tri-City Star as the legal papers for Brookings County for 2015.
Move by Miller, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Jensen. Further discussion? Staff, any comments?
Every year, we have three papers. It's always the Brookings Register every year, it's always the Volga Tribune every year, and then every other year, it goes back and forth between the Tri-City Star up in White and the Elkton Record. So, odd year, it's the Tri-City Star. Just routine.
I just have a question, based on what happened with the dairy up by Hendrix. And have we ever looked at including anything else in our, our legal papers? Shopper, for example, or, or something? A lot of people that live out in the county don't read the Brookings Register, so they're not seeing legal notices there. And I know that these are the ones that we've always done. I'm just curious if we've looked at what the circulation is of the various different papers and how we're getting to our county residents?
Again, not, not, I, not while I've been here, no. I haven't looked at it.
You know, it's, I can understand where, where people would think that's a real good idea. The problem is, we spend a great deal of money on our legals. That's, that's an issue, I think. So, you know, possibly if we were to change that, we would almost have to eliminate, I think, one of these and, and substitute that, unless we wanna spend a lot more money.
What is the budget amount for publishing legals? What are, what are we spending?
The other problem is our budget's set for 15.
So who, you're saying the shopper?
That would be a suggestion. I just think we ought to explore, because we've had some problems with publication, that we ought to look at what's available, look at what their circulations are and what populations are reaching, and make a decision based on that, so we're covering the county.
So I was, I was wondering if it's pertinent that, if it's in a certain, like, say it's near Elkton, make sure it's in, I don't know if you can do that, you know?
Yeah. I think we gotta stay-
In a timely fashion.
We gotta probably stay consistent with where it's at, so people know where they're at, and they can, if they want, they wanna look for them, if they wanna keep up to them, we gotta stay, I think it's important to stay consistent.
Right. I'm just saying an additional.
And we did do additional, in that very instance. Quite a bit of additional, just to cover ourselves.
It was in the Elkton one, for that.
And, and in Hendrix.
And, was it in the White? I don't remember if it was or not. It was in Hendrix also. So we actually did extra for that one. I'm just trying to-
And we also publish in Arlington newspapers when we have a conditionally used permit or variance by Lake Ponset. We do it in Arlington Sun to cover that area. But that's, even though it's not an official paper here, the zoning board and, and department, we go ahead and republish in the closest paper to where the event's happening.
For 2014, we budgeted $40,000 for publishing for commissioners. That doesn't include what the planning and zoning, equalization, finance, sheriff, all has publishing costs as well, just for commissioned minutes. And we've spent $34,366 of that so far year-to-date, what we did in 2014.
And again, my question is, I'm not sure that we need a change. I'm just asking, have we looked at whether or not we're doing it right? And, and looking at the circulations of the papers and which parts of the county they're reaching, I think would be part of, of that process, to make sure that we're having the best outreach with our publications is what we can have.
Okay. Can staff look into that? So, our options, I'm just trying to think of what our options are for the, for the county. We got the Brookings Register, shopper, the Volga Tribune, the Tri-City Star, Elkton's, what, is Elkton, what, Elkton Record? Is there any other ones that are options for us? Besides Arlington, I guess would be one, and-
Arlington and Hendrix are the nearby-
That are split, they have-
Yeah.
Split county and split state, yeah.
Correct.
Can you look into that for us? Alright, do we need to do anything on this today?
We, we have to, we need to, to pass this. I mean, we can always change things later if we decide to do that. We can bring it up, but I think today we need to at least get these papers in place, don't we?
Well, I would suggest that, to get something in place, because we will be needing to publish-
Right.
We publish almost every week, something. And we don't meet again until the 27th.
And we can come back and, and amend the-
We can revisit it.
Amended if we need to, or add one?
Yep.
If we need to decide to, or-
Yeah.
That type of thing too. It's interesting, it'd be interesting to see the shopper, 'cause previously, the shopper was just in town, delivered. Now it's mailed, and it'd be interesting to see how, how that's changed.
And, and I don't know. I just think we should ask questions.
They have all the stats.
Yeah.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Alright, under regular business, letter B, official depositories. Look for a motion to approve depositories for Brookings County funds for 2015. Currently, Richland State Bank, Bankstar Financial, Citizen State Bank, First Bank and Trust of Brookings, Dakota Bank, Wells Fargo, Home Federal, and MetaBank.
So moved.
Moved by Pierce, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Miller. Discussion? Comments from Stacy?
These are, these are the ones that we always use, correct, Vicki?
Yes, they're, it's every bank in the county. Some of the banks have combined, so we have listed every bank in the county. So, and with our investment policy, we do not have the credit unions because they don't pay bank franchise tax. So that is something we have in, in the investment policy, is just these banks that reside in the county.
Further discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Alright, an action to approve resolution 15-01, a resolution setting the official pay plan for 2015 for Brookings County. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pierce. Discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Action to approve resolution 15-02, a resolution setting meeting pay and per diem rates for volunteer county boards for 2015. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Pierce, second. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jensen. Discussion? Okay, hearing none, call the roll.
Pierce?
Yes.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Alright.
Motion carried.
Action to approve resolution 15-03, a resolution setting the pay for election workers for 2015. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pierce. Discussion?
These will be in the packet, so that if our citizens, or, on the website, so that if our citizens are interested in what these dollar amounts are, they can certainly go there and look, or they can call staff.
Further discussion?
I just have a question. Do we, with, with the, the pay that we have here, we get enough people to do what we need to do during the elections? It's not a problem?
Not really.
We have older people that are retired is about what we find. It has been more difficult. And now with the vote centers, we don't have to have quite as many, but it has been an issue to get people, I don't know if even the pay is, is the whole problem, it's just to get enough people that aren't working that are willing to do it.
And, did I understand, you just said you don't think the pay makes the difference? Or you think the pay would make it?
I, I, you know, I'm sure there is a part of it, but I don't know that that's the big issue with finding people.
Mostly, mostly it's the time commitment for people. Either they're retired and don't work and have the time to do that that day, 'cause it is a long day. I mean, they average between 12 and a half to 14, 14 and a half hours on election day. It's, it's the time commitment and whether, you know, some people do take a vacation day and then work that day, you know, take vacation from their routine jobs and come in, and work. It's proba, probably the hardest part of running the election is finding enough people. We, we always seem to come up with enough. Obviously, we have to. We get recommendations, you know, for other, from other workers and, and, and so we get it done, but, and I don't think, I don't think the pay is the issue, I really don't think. The amount is the issue.
Do you know approximately what we spend for election pay? And I'm sorry to keep asking budget questions.
If you give me just a second again. In 2014, and that was two major elections, the primary and the general, we spent about $22,500 on-
For workers.
For workers, for, for both elections. And this year, there's no scheduled elections that the county will be responsible for. That doesn't mean something can't come up. That's why we do this every year, this resolution every year, in case something does come up, because it can at any time. So, but yes, that's what we've spent.
Further discussion? Call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Letter F, under regular business, action to approve cellphone reimbursement for 2015. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pierce. Discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Letter G, based on the activity of 2000, or, 12/31/2014, action to approve an operating transfer in the amount of $3,406.18 from the general fund to contract law fund, and to close out the contract law fund 237 as of December 31st, 2014. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Pierce, second by Miller. Discussion?
This was discussed during budget time, if you recall, just closing out that contract law fund, moving the activity from that fund into the general fund, into the sheriff's department budget. What this action does is zeros out that contract law fund, and since it's zero, there's no money to move from there into general fund. So this officially closes it out, zeros it out, and then we'll close that, that fund, so it won't be an active fund for 2015.
Discussion? Further discussion on? Alright, call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Action to approve Resolution fifteen dash four, zero four, a resolution establishing the number of on-sale alcohol beverage license and the fees to be charged therefore. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Pierce, is there a second? Second by Jensen. Discussion.
This is in light of the fact that it was brought to our attention that we have an additional...
Yes, we have an additional license. This now sets us up for 2016 to issue that additional on-sale liquor license to an establishment in the county. This, this action sets the number that we have available now, beginning January first of 2016. What the board will do soon is open this up for applicants to apply, and then from there, whoever you decide, will, that act, that license then will become active January one of sixteen.
So we're taking it from six to seven? That, do this? All right. Yes, ma'am?
I, I listened to some of the conversation when the, I think the person from Oakwood was here to, to ask some questions about, about our process, and... It was my understanding from that conversation, and, and this might not be correct, that we could have a resolution that allowed us to have whatever the maximum number of licenses are available to us, instead of setting a specific number. Do we not have the ability to do that, so we don't run into the problem we had with this last matter?
Yeah, I can comment on that. The prior resolution we did have did set a specific number, and the statute, which is thirty-five, four, eleven point one, provides that if it's not previously fixed by an ordinance or continuing resolution, the commission shall determine the number of on-sale licenses it will approve for the ensuing calendar year. So, the board has a discretion to do what you choose to do, but the statute seems to imply that you would establish a number of licenses available.
Do we, based on how this process worked in the last year, has there been some conversation about having a, a staff person that's responsible for looking at those population numbers when they come in and keeping track of, of how many licenses we're entitled to have?
I mean, we just, yeah, it came to our attention, and we hadn't been keeping up to it, so now I'm guessing we will. But, you know, is the, do we know every year, population changes, or is that every, when the census comes, census every ten years?
I believe the statute speaks to, specifically to the census every ten years.
So it just changes once every ten years?
I believe so.
However, it's my understanding that following the census figures and the fact that our population did increase, it was checked out, and, and the state did not tell us at that time that we were entitled to an additional one. So, so I, you know...
I, I don't think it's the state's responsibility to tell us we're entitled...
No, but we asked.
We have...
We checked after the census figures came in.
Because wasn't it an estimated number?
Yeah.
For the year?
So, it, it was checked out after the census figures came in. So I don't know where this extra...
Abby, is it your understanding that it's only based on a number once every ten years? Or can you not tell from what you've got there?
I have not read anything to indicate that at this point. I'd have to do further review.
Because I, I...
So who does it count, though? Other than the census?
The official census is released once every ten years.
Right.
On, on the two thousand ten, two thousand twenty timeframe. In between, there is a, a estimated census per year, which shows us having...
So that's where?
A three percent growth. Now whether or not that number could be used to issue liquor license, I'd have to send it back over to the deputy state attorney.
Apparently, it can.
And I do not.
So, I mean, but do we have to get the state's approval to have, I mean, we can't just turn around and say, "We want ten, because we think we're going to have this." The state has to approve our liquor licenses.
We're entitled to a certain number.
We're entitled to a certain number.
Based on population.
Right.
But I think those numbers are, are determined annually and not every ten years.
They must be fluid.
Yes, I do.
And I, I wouldn't doubt that either. It seems like the city of Brookings is trying to get more and more, and they keep pushing to try to say, "Hey, we'll get one more, and we, we can show this." My question is, what, I don't know the process they go through to try to get that approval, you know?
I think the state, but this is a statement of my opinion, and I haven't researched it, but I think the state issues the population numbers, what their numbers show, and that the local government's responsible for looking at those each year, and then saying, "We think we're entitled to another license," and, and checking that out. And I just think we should have a staff person, that that be on their list of things. And I'm not sure what time of the year that, that information comes from the state, that we'd have it tickled, so we didn't have the same problem again.
Mr. Vice Chair, isn't it correct that there's a staff in the finance office that handles all of the licensing for this process?
Right.
And perhaps that person could follow up on the populations, or I'm happy to assist, but...
I agree. We should be doing it in our office, and we will do that from now on.
That'd be great.
So, we will let you know what we find out.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Pierce?
Yes.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, letter I, action to approve Agreement fifteen dash zero one, Contract Amendment One, between Brookings County and the state of South Dakota, Department of Health, for the WIC program for FY 2015. Is there a motion?
Motion, approve.
Approved by Jensen, seconded by Pierce. Discussion.
This is our standard WIC contract, right?
Actually, it's an amendment to that agreement.
That affects us how?
Yeah. It changes the contract amount to that thirty thousand, fifty-six.
Do you know what it was previously?
I don't offhand, I'd have to go back and look.
Did they say why?
I didn't see anything in, in their literature that they sent to us. That's why I was wondering.
Oops, come back here.
I mean, it says clerical support, but... Not sure.
Provide additional dollars for clerical support for the WIC program? We approved this, I think, back just last time, didn't we?
Yeah, I'm not sure. It was just recently, but I just don't remember when it was. Is that the WIC program? I don't think that's... Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure, I'd have to look into it.
Okay.
Shall we?
We could table it until the twenty-seventh, if you'd like.
If that's agreeable with you.
Okay, with the motion in the sec...
That'd be fine.
Okay. Make a motion to, supplement motion to table the next meeting. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Can, you'll have to take a specific, get a, a motion and a second to table.
Okay, couldn't substitute, okay. All right, need a motion to table, then? Motion made by Jensen?
Second.
Second by Pierce. Further discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Do I need to do a different roll call, Stacy, or... Okay, Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, letter J, action to approve one-year contract for jail food services for 2015. Is there a motion?
Move to approve for discussion purposes.
Moved by Miller for discussion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jensen. All right, discussion. Sheriff?
Commissioners, I would like to recommend that we give the bid to Hy-Vee at sixteen dollars a day.
Further discussion by commissioners?
I was unsure the motion was exactly to do what?
To approve a one-year contract for jail food service.
Would, did the motion include a particular, no, it's just a motion to approve?
No, no, we...
Okay.
We're deciding.
Okay.
Background...
Okay, background for the new commissioners is that we put out bids, I can't remember how mu- how many days prior to the twenty-second, but we put out a bid proposal for inmate meals due on the twenty-second. And the bids came on, in on the twenty-second, they were open at ten o'clock. There was two bids, from Hy-Vee, who's been with us for about sixteen years, and then there was a new company called CBM, which is out of Sioux Falls. Sioux Falls, CBM out of Sioux Falls does Mini-Haha Jail, and they do several jails in South Dakota plus nationwide. It's a nationwide company. However, they had to come in and find a place to cook the meals, which they did. They did find a local church that had a kitchen that was able to meet their, their, their kitchen needs and so forth, but of course, they didn't have staff, and they couldn't really hire or do anything until the approval of the commission, if, if their bid, or if they got the bid and so forth. On the twenty-second, they said nothing about an extension. I called them a couple of days before January, I think I called them on the thirtieth, CBM, and says, "Are you guys ready to start cooking on January first at seven AM?" And they said, "No." They hadn't hired staff, they didn't have product, and so they didn't meet the deadline. And so I feel that on our bid proposal, on page eleven of our bid, it says, on three point six, it says, "Contract term, the effective date of this contract is January first, two thousand fifteen, at seven AM." They never asked until after the fact for an extension, so that they could hire staff. And so I feel that they didn't meet the, the bid requirement to start on January first, and so that's why I'm recommending the Hy-Vee. The bid came in at fourteen seventy-five for CBM, and the bid for Hy-Vee is at sixteen dollars with a difference of a dollar twenty-five. One of the things, just, just to give you a little history about, for budgeting purposes, I look at what the daily population was from the year past and try to calculate out a budget for, for the coming year. And of course, that's, it's a guess, how many inmates I'm going to have. For example, in, in two thousand thirteen, we had twenty inmates per day. Two thousand fourteen, we had twenty-six inmates per di- per day. But I, we always don't have twenty-six meals every day. So in two thousand fourteen, we had twenty-six inmates per day, but the yearly average per day was eighteen point eight-five. And the reason for that is I may have, let's say my popu- jail daily population on a Thursday is twenty-three, I may have twenty-three that eat breakfast, but with work and school release, I may only have thirteen to eat dinner. Maybe I'll have seventeen to work that, that come in at night, so it, it doesn't always come out to that. So that's, when I budget, I always have a little cushion in there to make sure I have enough. We spend anywhere from nine thousand to eleven thousand dollars a month for, for meals. My annual budget is around a hundred and twenty thousand, I believe, for, for meals. But again, for budgeting purposes, I always look at the bigger number, but that's not always going to be accurate because of school, work, release, and people leaving for work and this, this type of thing. So that's, so that's where we're at right now.
Mr. Vice Chair, just a comment from my end. I had visited with the sheriff on this, and I did some research, and I just wanted to let the commissioners know that South Dakota codified law does provide that a lowest bidder, if not the lowest responsible bidder, by not meeting the criteria laid out in the invitation for bids, that bid can be rejected, and you could accept the next lowest responsible bid that did meet the criteria. And I would just further note that if a certain bid is going to be accepted, a motion to amend the previous motion should be made to specifically state who it is that you'd be issuing the contract to.
All right, further discussion, and if anyone wants to make a amendment to the motion to, yes?
I have a question.
Yep.
Sheriff, the, so it's been sixteen years with Hy-Vee, is that what you said?
Yes.
And are you satisfied? Is, do you have any problems with the inmates with the food? What, how's that work?
No, no, it's, we've not had any complaints. I have no, Terry Skinner, the manager is, you know, we have a lot of, I have five inmates right now that have medical diet needs, and, and they're, I have no issue telling them what they need and, or their diet and, and so forth. Where CBM would be the same way. They've been in the, they've been in the inmate business for, for several years, too. I, I would not have a, an issue with them either. It's just that they weren't able to, to meet, to meet the, the deadline.
We would need a amendment to the motion to identify who we want to give this to, so...
I'll amend the motion to add Hy-Vee as the provider.
Okay, amendment to the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jensen. Any further discussion?
Just, commissioners, I, I just wanted that, normally, we have a three-year contract, but we, at this point, that we had decided earlier just to do a one-year contract. I also will put out bids a little sooner, next time, so that if a company does want to come in, they have a little more time also of...
All right, call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you have to vote on the motion as amended.
That was the amendment?
That was the roll call on the amendment. Now you vote on the, uh, motion as amended.
All right, call the roll on the motion as amended.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right, letter, or, letter K, action to approve the LEOP No Change Certificate. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Pierce, second, anybody?
Second.
Second by Miller. Discussion.
Yes, sir. We updated our Local Emergency Operations Plan in two thousand fourteen. The, and last month in December, we did a, a line item update of the railroad, the railroad changed names from Canadian Pacific, we changed it to the new name of the railroad. So as of two thousand fifteen, the document stands as, as it is, and we're requesting that you sign a document stating that there's no change done to the Local Emergency Operations Plan for two thousand fifteen, please.
Mr. Vice Chair, sorry to interrupt again. I would just note that this document specifies chairperson Wyseff, and he is not here today, so that should be changed probably to Vice Chairman Krogman.
Get to sign stuff, too? I thought I was just running the movie. All right, well, do we need a motion then, or amendment to that, to make that change, or how do we want to handle that? What do you suggest?
We can, Bob, can that document be altered in handwriting? Can we cross... Can we cross out a name and rewrite it?
With that, or I can easily just reprint another document, as long as the chairperson, vice chairperson's authorized to sign it. As long as I, it's in the minutes that you're allowed to sign it, I can print you another copy with whatever language you'd like on it.
I think as long as it's clear to the public, just that you would be the one signing today and the name will be switched. That would be sufficient.
All right, any further discussion? Call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Letter L, action to approve SLA quarterly agreement, first quarter 2015. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Miller? Second by Jensen. Discussion.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The state and local agreement, the reason why it's the first quarter of its fiscal year 2015, it's, the state and local agreement is a, it's an agreement between the state of South Dakota and Brookings County that states would do so much on the emergency management side of the House. The funding comes from the federal government, Federal Emergency Management Agency, Homeland Security, FEMA, and that they use a federal fiscal year. So that's why this is the first quarter. This is from October 1st until January, oh, December 31st. And the state and local agreement, it's basically, it's a document that dictates or lays out in what the requirements of Brookings County is to receive this federal funding put down through the state. And typically what we do is we, it requires us to maintain a detailed list of how much funding, how much salaries are paid, it breaks it down to telephone usage, percentage of everything within the emergency management side of the House, gets up to a 50% reimbursement from the federal government. So what we have to do, the emergency, I have to work with the finance office, and anything with the county development side, planning, zoning, and drainage, doesn't get included in this particular document. This is strictly only emergency management activities, and that's the document that we're requesting you sign today.
Further discussion? Here and done, call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, letter M, board appointments, action to approve the following volunteer board members. Had, see them in your packet? We have.
I have an additional one.
There were two additional applications that I placed on your, in front of you this morning. Those came after the posted deadline of December 30th to apply. However, we haven't received any additional applications for this board other than the five, and there are actually six openings. So I guess I'm, you'll leave it up to board discretion on if you want to appoint the two that were late in coming, or if you want to direct us to open that up again and create a different deadline, and then we can include those two applicants in that next round. That being said, the extension board appointments end January 9th.
My opinion is, I would like to just see us appoint those.
Basically, we have the three that came in on time, and that's what's up there now. We have two extra, and we have a total of how many positions open?
We have six positions open, and then the three applicants that were in the packet, and then the two additional today.
So we could fill them, so there is openings for them.
There is, there's still one opening.
So if we advertised it again, there would still be some opportunity for somebody to get in if they wanted to.
Correct.
Okay. Discussion on, we want an amendment to add the two people to that, or do you want separate motions?
We have them here, so we don't have to have a motion to do that, do we?
Is there anything that being turned in not on time, or?
Yeah, if they miss, if they miss the deadline, and we fill the positions, then, you know, they're out. And, but I think the situation here is we have open spots, and we're going to be doing this again. And so, you know, I guess that's our decision, if we want to turn around and take, if we feel these two are adequate to get in there, then we can put them in, even though they missed, because we're going to need to fill it anyway. And, and so.
But even though they are current board members, had someone else applied, then we would be needing to make a decision whether or not we would.
Because current board members have to comply also.
Yes, they do.
Because with zoning, Ellen Jones, I mean, I think you just kind of spaced it off.
And someone else applied.
And, I don't know, I think it'd be, in order that the board sent out a courtesy letter to current members if they, you know, are interested, and if they don't get it in on time, they should, you know, get a reminder, at least, if you're serving on a board.
And we did send out notification to all current board members with the deadline and a copy of the application as well. I believe we even let Sonya know as a reminder to those, you know, to remind those folks to get applications.
It was announced at the last extension board meeting, which was ample time for them to.
Yeah.
Get their apps in.
I'd just say in the future, if there's a current board member, something would come up that, at least I guess, I feel they should have at least a call to say, say tomorrow's deadline, and are you interested?
I think a better way to handle that than hold their hands would be to put right on the application, the deadline. And then if people aren't responsible enough to apply by that deadline, which is in writing on their application, then we re-advertise and it's open.
You're saying, put a deadline on the citizen interest application?
Yes.
Is there different deadlines for different boards, or we?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chair, and I believe when we issue our public notices, our calls for applications, the dates are publicly noticed for our deadlines, so it's something that's readily available to the public in general. And I would also note that in your agenda, the three applications that were included are all that's in the packet. So if any action is going to be taken on the two new applications, I believe you'd either need separate, a separate action item, or you'd have to amend.
And that's my, that was my thought, I guess, so. So we have a motion and a second for the three, Andy Dupre, Alan Gregg, and Richard Waldner. Any discussion on those three?
Do we have a motion?
No.
Oh, we don't, sorry.
No.
I need a motion then.
So moved.
Moved for those three? Okay, second on that?
Second.
Second by Pierce? Discussion. Andy, have you any discussion on that? Okay. Here and no discussion, call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, if we want to take up the two we have in front of us here, we can, can we do that even though it's not on the agenda? I mean, our agenda item is approve volunteer appointments, doesn't necessarily say whoever, so can we move forward?
To the extension board? I think we can.
Or do we have to, since they're late, do we have to send a whole new round out? I mean, personally, I'd like to fill the positions and get them in there, and pass board members and stuff like that.
And those two are both past board members. And for that reason, I would make a motion that we appoint them.
I second it.
Second. Motion made by Miller, second by Jensen, to appoint Jennifer Pickard and Deb Ford to the extension board. Discussion. Here and done, call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, my question then is we have one more left. We obviously want to fill that, what are we, the next process to fill that spot?
We could send out an additional public notice and have another deadline, I suppose, before your January 27th. You don't meet again until January 27th, so have it just a couple of weeks from now.
I, if I could add, you might hold off for a couple of days, because I think that other one is coming, rather than pay to advertise again. If you can just hold off a couple of days, I think you'll have it. Unless everybody feels strongly that we need to advertise.
I think we should advertise. If we don't have it today, we should take action and advertise.
Larry?
I agree.
Advertising, okay. I think we should advertise it too, so let's advertise it, and if the other person gets theirs in, and that's the only one, we'll go on that then, so consensus is to advertise it again. All right. Move on to letter N. Do I need to, I didn't need to, do I have a motion going there or anything like that? Do I?
No.
No, we're good to go, it was just discussion, okay. Action to approve volunteer board members and department liaisons for 2015. All right. Here we go.
We can get some easy ones out of the way here, because the chair and the vice chair have certain ones that they have to be on.
The East Central Regional Communications Council was this chair, and then it's typically the vice chair where you put, the vice chair typically joins that so that they're familiar with the board, you know, because typically the vice chair moves into that chair position the next year.
So add those on there.
Also housing and redevelopment. Is typically the chair. And.
Was there anything else that?
The local emergency planning committee. Right, is the chair.
And then I don't know what our process is, I think it's pretty informal from what people have told me. But would it make sense to do the departments before we do the boards, because some of those go like this?
I guess it doesn't bother me, you know. We can certainly do that. All right, well, we'll just work our way down and discuss on these, and see who we can get to take them and go from there.
And did I understand that emergency management is always the chair?
Yes.
Yes.
So that one.
All right, we will work down to department liaisons first. I was on community health and WIC, and I certainly can stay on that, but it doesn't, I mean, it's up to somebody else, if somebody would like to do that. All right, I'll take that. Emergency management will be Wyeth. Equalization. You know.
I'm wondering if it would be a little easier, Bob, I guess I would like your input on this, to have just one for the two, or does it not matter to you?
It really doesn't, doesn't matter. The reason for the chairperson to be the recommendation, recommended for the emergency management one is, they get calls all hours of the night. If I get called out, I've got to go, and typically the chairperson's the one I would call. I can call anybody that you'd like me to call, obviously. And, you know, the planning and zoning, it just takes so much more time. I, in my opinion, it's difficult to be the chairperson and to be on the planning and zoning commission, as the county commissioner.
Okay, that answers my question.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess, you know, not having Tom here, you know, for him to be, he's going to be added, you know, to a couple here. Equalization, finance office are both Toms, and we can keep him on there, but if somebody would like to do that.
Well.
I can do equalization.
I can do equalization? Okay. Jensen will be on equalization. Finance office. If Tom's going to do emergency management and zoning and drainage, that's, Bob, you thought to do both?
No.
No? Not to do both?
I'd actually recommend not to do both, just strictly because of the time constraint, sir.
So we're going to need.
So let's leave him on finance.
We'll leave him on finance then. Highway.
I'll take highway.
I'll take highway? All right. Rather take highway, register of deeds.
I'd like to work with the register of deeds.
Okay. Sounds good, all right, this is working out good for me.
Well, if you, I'm sorry, Ryan, if you wanted to keep register of deeds, that's fine.
No, that's okay. You know, but that being said, I would certainly take sheriff, that kind of thing too, so. But it doesn't matter if anybody else would like to, if we want to too, or?
I'm interested in sheriff, but, but, but is that not going to leave enough then?
Well, you know, again, if you, for sheriff, you know, emergency type of thing, we could, my thought was, you know, make that as the chair, similar person to the emergency management for the calls, and the combination of all that stuff going together, that was my thought. But again, I don't want to tell Wyeth, Seth, he's got to do something when he's not here either, so.
Maybe you should take it.
Does, you know, I can, I don't, I'll have, since I don't have register of deeds, I certainly can take that, so. Sound okay?
Yep.
All right. So Krogman on sheriff, state's attorney, we need a new person on that.
I can take state's attorney.
Okay. Miller on state's attorney, veterans, human services, need a new person on that.
I'd be willing to do either veterans or weed. Steph, do you understand?
Yeah, I'll stay with weed, that's kind of a, no problem.
We'll go Jensen on veterans, human services, zoning and drainage.
I would be interested in doing that.
Okay. Leanne on zoning and drainage. Any questions, Seth, there any comments on that? All right, we'll go back up to the top and work through committee board departments. First of all, we'll see if people want to do it, obviously, we'll figure out what Commissioner Wyeth has to do, but after that, we'll fill in here. Miller is currently on 4H, promotion expansion.
This board does not meet real often. Quarterly usually, but there may be some combination with the extension board, so I think it would be advisable to have a different, I'd like to keep extensions, so I think it would be advisable to have someone else on the promotion and expansion board. Okay?
Larry's on then the 4H promotion expansion committee. Okay, next is Beta. Falcon was previously on that. Larry, interested in that?
Yeah.
Okay. Larry would like to do that. The next two are Brookings County Regional Railroad Authority, we'll need two new members for that. Comment on that?
That was typically the chair.
And vice chair?
And, well, Dennis wasn't. No, they haven't, really, they haven't been chair and vice. Whoever is, one of the commissioners usually acts as the chair of that board, but they've been, Dennis and Don had been on that for a number of years. It rarely meets.
I can, I can be on it. I can take one of them if somebody wants to take another one.
Larry, you said that was something you were interested in?
I, I could, yes.
Okay. Jensen and myself will be on that then. BDC, I'd like to keep that if I could.
I think you should for continuity.
We have one member on there that's represented by the county and stuff too, so. Everybody's okay, I'll stay on that one. Miller, extension board, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Brookings Board of Health.
What is that board?
Yeah.
Anybody know? Oh, no.
I don't know if there's meetings or not meetings, or? Well, I'll take it. Haven't heard any meetings yet, so that'd be a good one. I can, I can go ahead and take that too, so. Contract law enforcement, now, is that? Now, is that... Are we... Is this the same thing that the fund that we just got rid of?
Yeah, but there's still contract law.
Okay.
And what the purpose of a liaison is if one of the contract towns doesn't feel that I'm fulfilling their contract, they would have a commissioner that they could go to. To my knowledge, in the 16 years I've been sheriff, that's never became an issue, but that isn't saying it won't be, so it's just...
Well, I'll take it. That's simple.
I have a question first, though, before we say that. When you look at the liaison for the departments, it says Sheriff, Detention Center, Contract Law, and then we've got Contract Law again.
That was my thing. I was thinking I should probably...
My guess, it should be all together.
I could probably take that.
So let's just cross that one off.
Yeah, that's what I would...
Because the liaison can take care of it. Won't that work, girls?
I am. All right, we'll get rid of that one. Next one, Domestic Abuse Shelter, Ex officio.
Yes, I want to keep it.
Let's keep that, okay. Next one is East Central Behavior, Health, and Chemical Dependency Board. Wyeth Seth is on that. Talking with him, he said he would be willing to give that one up. Said he's ruffled enough feathers, I think. So, anybody interested in that one?
I've already served on that board, and I think it's a good experience.
And I've been on the board, but not as commissioner, so I've had that experience.
Let me think here. Larry, you've been on quite a few here already. How many? Kind of want to make them... We don't want to wait too much on this one. Or too much... I can take that one. Are those meetings during the day? Think they are?
They're usually at five o'clock, I believe.
Okay. All right, and I'll talk with Tom and get some background on that one, because I think he wanted to... Since he's taken some extra stuff here, so Tom will be taking East Central Regional Communications Chair. Tom will take that, and then Vice Chair takes... I'll have that one too. Okay. All right, questions so far? Got that all figured out? All right. First District Association Local Governments. Falcon was on that.
Does that need an experienced commissioner?
I think it probably should have. And I would volunteer for that one.
Okay. Are we okay with that? All right. Government Affairs Committee.
What is that?
Is that Chamber?
That's on a... It's a Chamber Board.
Chamber of Commerce, Government Affairs Committee. So...
Is somebody interested in that? I will take that if nobody else is interested.
Growth Partnership Board, and I think Tom said he would like to stay on that one. Yeah, it's good to have continuity on that one. Housing and Redevelopment Commission, which will be the chair, so Wyeth Seth will have that one. ICAP, Interleagues Community Action, I'm on that currently, and I can certainly stay on that unless somebody else would like to take that. I'll stay on that. Joint Powers Board. Joint Powers Board is a board that runs... Makes decisions on the building between the city and the county. We usually have two members of the county, two members of the city. And then our assistants, Jeff Weldon, City Manager, and then Stacy will be there also. And we meet quarterly in the morning usually. Yeah, at 3:00 in the morning. Try to get done around, you know, half hour, 45 minutes. It's basically making decisions on, you know, we put a budget together for the building. If some has... People have requests to put stuff in the building, if we have maintenance problems, different things like that. I've sat on there with Dennis. I certainly can continue to sit on there unless somebody else would like to go ahead.
And I'd like to take the second spot.
Okay. Unless, if you guys want to take my spot, you certainly can, if you're interested in that.
If you don't care if you continue, I'd do that.
Okay.
Well, I think...
We should have one experienced person.
Yeah, I think we... I think we need the continuity because you've been on ever since this building started.
Well, Dennis says, "I've been on since my term." Yeah, I took it right away. That's a couple of years.
But see, it's only... We're only two years old.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll stay on. It's not a big deal.
So... You know, if we're not overtaxing you...
Still have a couple more. But I mean, the liaisons...
Well, maybe it doesn't matter. Maybe it doesn't matter.
Yeah, we're fine.
Go ahead.
Again, it's not that much. I can... You know, meetings for me are better during the day, and that's a day meeting. So rather than evening meetings, but... So, but... Yeah, so we'll just, myself and you on it. Does that sound okay, or did you have another idea?
Well, if Leanne feels strongly, she...
Oh, I'm not feeling strongly. I was open either way.
Okay, okay. Okay, so we'll go Miller and Krogman on the Joint Powers Board. All right, the Local Emergency Planning Committee, that would be Wyeth Seth. Yep, and SwifTeL Center Advisory Board.
I'd like to do that.
Like that, okay. Leanne would like to do that. Planning and Zoning Board Member.
And I'd like to do that.
All right, sounds good. I know Tom doesn't, so...
He already gave me the meeting stuff for tonight.
There you go.
Okay, Weed Pest Board Member.
I'd like to keep that.
All right. Youth and Family Services Advisory Board, JDC. Falcon's on that. I'm not... I don't know about this one very well.
I would be interested in doing that. I don't think it has to be the person that's the contact with the sheriff's office.
It's... Those meetings are in Sioux Falls at the Public Safety Building. I have filled in for him a few times. They're kind of interesting.
Are you interested?
No, no, that's fine.
Okay.
You want to take it, that's fine.
And we'll take that. Hospital Board, Ex officio, again, non-voting member. This is a new one. We just started this last year. They asked us to have an ex officio on there. The city has two ex officio members. And I was on there. Very interesting board to be on. Learn a lot, so if somebody has interest, I would give it up. But if they don't, I certainly will serve on it again too. But if somebody has some interest and would like to get involved in that, certainly. Going once? All right. I'm on the Hospital Board again. All right. 34th Avenue Liaisons and Novita Project Liaisons. We were put on that basically because we started this prior to make sure that we had continuity of people on there. I would suggest that us to stay on it until the end of the project, both there. Again, doesn't mean we can't involve other commissioners and stuff like that. We'll give you reports on everything like that. So we can't make any decisions without the Board approval, but it just... We're working towards getting... Trying to get the project done, so if everybody's okay with that, we'll keep those there. South Brookings Drainage Liaison, this is what Doc was here earlier for. So...
You want to try it?
You want to try it? All right. Good, Larry's going to take care of that for us. County Coroner. Now, we've always had some stuff with this one.
County Coroner is actually an elected position. But in all of the years I've been with the county, no one has ever run for County Coroner in Brookings County. So the board appoints typically just for a one-year term. We did advertise it. I believe this was the midterm for the coroner. So we advertised it at election time as to fill in the two remaining terms of a four-year term. No applicants. So here we are again, appointing again for a year. And then in next year, in 2016, we'll advertise it for an elected four-year position to see if we'll get anybody to apply.
Marty, do you know if she's interested in continuing on?
Yes, she is. I contacted her, and she is.
Okay.
So the liaison basically...
Yeah. Talks... I mean, she's kind of... Do we even have a... We don't even have contact. Don't you mostly work with her?
Yes, that's correct.
So I don't think we need... I mean, basically, Joni's the one that we're appointing again, is what we're doing. If she's willing to do it again, so...
And the deputies, are they the same as you had last?
There would be some additions to that. If you want those names now.
Yeah, do you have the names now?
Yep. It'd be myself. My Assistant Sheriff, Scott Sebring. Deputy Darren Hyder. Deputy Chuck Umberger. And Deputy Darcy Clifford. And why... My goal is to have my whole staff as deputy coroners. In other words, the ones I just named off have went to the two-year school or two-year... Or two-day school, 16 hours, to qualify as deputy coroners. So that way, in the absence of the coroner, a deputy coroner can fill that role in the absence of the coroner. Also, statute a couple of years ago, three years ago, it was only two people that could order autopsies, and that was the State's Attorney and, of course, the Governor. They did add the sheriff now, so the sheriff can order an autopsy. The deputy coroners, in my absence, can be the sheriff. And that you appointed officially is that they can re... If the coroner is absent or can't get a hold of the coroner, they could order an autopsy if they needed to.
Okay, so we take Stoltenberg and Eaton off.
Actually, put Stoltenberg on there. He's still part-time, and he is still a deputy coroner. So I'm good... Because it was Stoltenberg and Hyder before, right?
Eaton was on there too.
Yeah, you can remove Val Eaton.
Okay.
She has moved to Pierce.
All right, you got all those?
Yeah, that's just for the heck of it.
Okay, we're going to start at the top. 4H Promotion Expansion is Jensen. Beta is Jensen. The Railroad Authority is Krogman and Jensen. BEDC, Krogman. Extension Board, Miller. Board of Health, Krogman. Domestic Abuse is Miller. East Central Behavioral Health, Krogman. East Central Regional Communications Council, the chair is Wyeth Seth, and the other position is Krogman. First District is Miller. Governmental Affairs, Pierce. Growth Partnership, Wyeth Seth. Housing and Redevelopment, Wyeth Seth. ICAP, Krogman. Joint Powers Board, Krogman and Miller. LEPC is Wyeth Seth. SwifTeL, Pierce. Planning and Zoning, Pierce. Weed and Pest, Miller. Youth and Family Services, JDC, is Pierce. Hospital Board, Krogman. 34th Avenue, Wyeth Seth and Krogman. And the Novita is Wyeth Seth and Krogman. South Brookings Drainage, Jensen. County Coroner, Joni Holm. The deputy coroners are Stanwick, Sebring, Hyder, Umberger, Clifford, and Stoltenberg. Sure. Who?
Pike.
Ah, okay.
Can we start over from the top?
No. Department Liaisons, Community Health, WIC is Krogman. Emergency Management, Wyeth Seth. Equalization, Jensen. Finance Office, Wyeth Seth. Highway, Miller. Register of Deeds, Pierce. Sheriff, Detention Contract Law, Krogman. State's Attorney, Miller. Veterans Human Services, Jensen. Weed, Miller. And zoning is Pierce.
All right.
Awesome. I'm moved to approve.
Motion by Miller. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pierce. Any further discussion? Any or none, call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, we will move on to number 12 on our agenda, Commission Department Director Report. That is you.
Okay, I emailed out my report yesterday, but then I also gave you all hard copies on your desk this morning. Spoke with Jackie Lanning, the city engineer for Brookings, yesterday about the city reimbursing the county for their portion of the 34th Avenue project. As long as the board is agreeable, we will... Basically, the county will be the contract holder. We'll bid the project, the entire project. Visiting with Banner, the city's portion is about 18% of that total project. And so we'll figure out what, to date, Banner has done as far as the city's portion. And the city can reimburse us for those expenses already incurred. And then moving forward, we'll also do the 18% of the total cost of the project, moving forward. But the county will be paying it upfront, basically, and be getting reimbursed from the city. On iPad stipend, that's been taken care of. Minutes, actually, I forgot to mention that this morning, the minutes weren't included in your packet from last week. They're not done yet, but we'll get them to the papers today and then approved at your next meeting along with the minutes from today's meeting. We discussed extension appointments. Just some reminders that I had on my staff report. If you do get invitations at home, as the commissioners at home, or if there's any issues or concerns that come up, the easiest way to pass those along to all of the board members is to get them to me, and then I can get that information out very easily to the other board members. If there's something that you personally get, specifically with the invitations... If you're getting invitations for events as a commissioner at home, they may not be sending that same invitation to the office, and we don't know about it. And we need to do those as public notices if three or more of you plan to attend an event. So anything that you can make us aware of, the better. And just for the new commissioners, agendas close typically noon the Wednesday before each meeting, so we have a chance to get that done. It varies a little bit around the holidays. We've been moving deadlines up for Christmas and New Year's, but typically, it's at noon the Wednesday before. And other meetings, if we have budget hearings, when it comes to April, we'll have equalization boards, things of that nature. We typically try to fit those in on commission meeting Tuesdays. So keep that in mind as we kind of get into those times. April is equalization boards, and then June, July, we do budgets. So we kind of set those Tuesdays aside. With Commissioner Wyeth Seth being gone today, the group photo, I think I'm going to try to schedule that with Melby after our meeting on the 27th and have us all go to him instead of him packing up all of his stuff and coming to us. If we go out to him with our group, maybe after that meeting, and I'll set that up for sure and get a kind of a tentative time, because we're never exactly sure when we're going to be done.
And then schedule lunch at the Ram on Wyeth Seth. As per Larry's suggestion.
Then just some upcoming dates. Again, tonight is the holiday gathering at the VFW, and it is a potluck.
That means I have to drink some?
Commissioner Krogman. So that means you have to bring a dish to pass. The 12th is the Volga Fireman's Feed. Legislative session will be getting underway. I don't know where Dr. Deutsch is. He emailed me yesterday, and he said he would let me know if he couldn't make it down, and I haven't heard from him today. So I was thinking maybe he thought it was 10:45, but he didn't show up for that time either. So I'm not sure, but he was... But he also did indicate yesterday that he's going to be emailing legislative updates. And he will be emailing those to me, and then I will get those out to you throughout session. So county offices will be closed on the 19th. And just so you are all aware too, Brookings SDSU Day at the Capitol on the 21st. If any of you do plan to attend, let me know. I can get a travel request. It'll be approved after the fact, but we can get a travel request for anybody from the county that plans to attend that event that day.
I do plan to attend.
Okay.
I'm going to attend, but I'm going to be out there already. I have a meeting in Pierce the day before, so I'm just going to stay the night.
Okay.
And go, so I won't be riding the bus or doing anything. I'll be driving myself, so...
Are you going to... Okay.
I won't be riding the bus either, but I'm going.
I'm going, but I'm riding the bus. I don't think I need a travel request then, is that correct?
Anytime.
Three of us will be there, though. We're going to have to...
I just wonder what it's all involved.
Well, what it is, is put on by the Chamber and BEDC. Kind of arranged this to get Brookings and SDSU in front of all the legislature. And so they put together a day, and they call Brookings, and then SDSU, we serve ice cream in the chambers of the Senate there. And so they have two buses going, and if you want to get on one of those buses, just let them know. And basically, there's also meetings that they put together. And so Al Hughton would be the one to talk to, for sure, and to let him know that you're going to be going. And then they'll have meetings. If we can get with the Governor, we get with the Governor. We try to get with... We try to get with Pat Costello, GOED, Department of Labor, and so they have different meetings, and then he'll kind of put you where you want to go. DOT also, definitely, and then they'll have lunch and a little reception afterwards, and so.
Some are small group meetings, and we don't always get involved in that, but there, there are large group meetings that anybody can go to. So, you still would be going to meetings if you chose to do so.
It's, it's a long day if you ride the bus, I mean, you're, you're there at five thirty, six o'clock, and then...
Five forty-five at least.
Five forty-five, is that what it is? And then, you'll get back by midnight, basically, so.
The Chamber has a couple of buses, charter buses, that they take out there for the day, if you choose to ride with them, we need to let them know. The twenty-first, it's a Wednesday?
Wednesday. Yeah, it is. It's a Wednesday. Like I said, I, I got to be out there in here anyway, so I'm, we going out Monday night and be there Tuesday, so.
And I've already notified Elaine at the Chamber, so.
You have already, okay. So, if you just want to let me know if you're planning on going.
I think I'll probably go.
Okay.
It's, it's a good idea, and it, it was noted that there weren't very many Commissioners present last year, so I'm, thank you.
Are you going to ride the bus? Are you going to drive yourself, do you think?
I don't know about that yet.
Okay. Unless you have... If you have, unless you have any other questions for me, I don't have anything else.
You have questions?
If, if someone's interested in riding out there, we could, I think there's enough County people, we could just take our own County vehicle, if you want to get with me, one of the Commissioners that don't want to ride the bus. I got a travel request then, that I can, I could take one of our vehicles, be a tour guide. I'm going because of the Department of Transportation meeting and the Ed Hop Transportation Committee I'm on.
Okay, well, we can communicate on that, so. Bus, bus is a longer one, sometimes it stays there a little longer.
It is, it's a good networking experience, it really is.
All right. Thank you, now we'll move on to thirteen, Deputy State's Attorney, do you have anything for us, Abby?
Just briefly, for the benefit of the new Commissioners, if you ever have any concerns with an item in the packet, questions that you think are of a legal nature, please feel free to get in touch with me via email, or in person, or by phone in our office. I'm here to assist you with that. It helps me to have your questions ahead of time, it'd be very rare that I can give you spontaneous legal research that, and read your mind. So, any, any insight you can give me ahead of time, I'm happy to do the research and come up with an opinion for you. Just so you're aware, I do the same thing for the Department Heads, whenever they have issues on legal matters, interpretations of contracts or laws, we often meet to discuss those things, so if something of that nature comes up, you're more than welcome to address that with me as well. I do also represent the County in foreclosure and welfare matters, so, like Mike Holshozer had mentioned, the welfare cases that we have, we occasionally have foreclosure matters, I serve as Counsel for the County on those, so if there's anything that comes up that you have questions on regarding that. If we are involved in a lawsuit that's really truly of a specialized nature, we are a member of a Claims Pool, and we can assist, or we can request outside counsel if we need specialized representation on a matter. And then, any, any pending litigation, or any pending consultation I need to have regarding a current legal issue, I would conduct in an executive session with you, and I'd request that in advance. Beyond that, I am working on the Thirty-Fourth Avenue project with Vice Chair Krogman. That's something I don't have much update for you at this point, but hopefully by the twenty-seventh, we will have some updates as to where we're at with that. And I will just continue working with all the parties involved, Banner and Sioux Valley, to keep that moving forward from my end. And then, hopefully, we will have our statistics done, maybe around the time the Sheriff's Office does, and our numbers can coincide a little bit. But we start working on those now that we're at the beginning of the year, and Clyde Calhoun, the State's Attorney, will be here to present those numbers to you once we have them compiled, and we hope, hope within about a month or so to have that complete, so. Other than that, that's it.
All right, Commission Reports. How about you start off?
I didn't have any meetings between our last meeting and this one, it's amazing.
Okay, Larry, comments?
I do have one, I attended the Brookings County Winter Calf Show. They did have a hundred and fifteen entrants, and this was when it was extremely cold out there, and numbers were down, I think only about ten from the year, previous year. There was entrance from five different states. They made do with what they had out there. The pickups stayed running because of the diesel pickups pulling the trailers, and there was many generators sitting outside the building running heaters.
I have nothing.
Okay. All right, remind, just to give you an update on where we're at with our Thirty-Fourth, I'm still doing emails back and forth. That intersection would be Twentieth Street and Thirty-Fourth there, they're redesigning that, which we talked about in our, in the last meeting. And we're going to get that to Sioux Valley and, and see if that will change their costs, because they may not have to move a pole now, which we're hoping. And then, we are working on trying to get that contract with them, and then Dick's going to be, I'm not, have you made any contact with anybody as far as meeting, setting up appointments? We're still in, you know, and, yeah, the letter of intent, we have, we're looking at that and stuff too. Do you think we can go now and start meeting?
Yeah, Ryan had just sent me those last night, and so I'd like a chance just to review them before we go out with it. But once I've had a chance to look through those, I'll respond to the both of you, and we should be able to move forward, getting some feedback from the landowners.
Okay. I don't, I don't know if you want to, you know, some times, some dates, Thursday and Friday of this week are good for me. All next week is decent, but I think sooner than later, we need to at least give them a call and set up a time. All right, will do. And like I said, if I can go with you, we talked about me going with you on those if you'd like. It's up to you, I don't have to either, if you feel like we're going to have an issue and need some discussion and stuff like that, that you don't feel comfortable doing that, we can, I can certainly come along too. All right, but that's all I have. Anything else for the good of the cause? Welcome. Congratulations on your first meeting. If you're still standing, that's good. I look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move by Pierce, second by Jensen?
Yep.
Yeah, all right. Call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller? Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you.